Last session this morning and we propose to serve this afternoon. I think a lot of people have come to capture or to take a walk on water. But anyway, it's nice to have you there. It's an important session. Sustainable Development Goals: The Future We Want, But Can We Have? My name is Tim Wilcox, I'm head of BBC and I'm president and also correspondent. And so, can you give me what do you need this one?
Thank you for the presentation.
Oh, I'm so sorry, okay. Just by way of a very brief introduction, Donald Trump's recent speech at the United Nations, a forthright display of his America First doctrine, the finger pointing, the bellicose rhetoric, threatening dismantles we know the Iran nuclear deal and totally destroy North Korea. Underlying, though, his declarations, a clear message that the sovereign state still reigns supreme, national interests overshadow shared objectives. What does this mean then? We ask for the Sustainable Development Goals. Adapted, adopted by the UN just a year before Trump's election, the SDGs will require countries cooperating on crucial global targets related to climate change, poverty, public health, much else. In an age of contempt for international cooperation, not to mention climate change denial in the Trump administration, is achieving the SDG's wishful thinking. Very much the focus of what we're going to be talking today. In Europe, Africa and beyond, the pendulum seems to be swinging away from a strong millennium Development Goals orientated poverty scheme to a new focus on the role of the private sector, economic development, energy, infrastructure. There is danger, many people think, and opportunity here. So how do we boost development spending from millions to trillions with the help of private investors? Just a few days ago, you might have seen the comments of Werner Hoyer, President of European Investment Bank, saying that sustainable development goals required a paradigm shift away from donor thinking and aid mentality towards supporting sound projects backed by good economics for good purposes. Do grants, interest rate subsidies, guarantees, risk favoring large infrastructure projects in middle income countries to the detriment of less developed nations where the need is greater, but so is the investment risk. The panelists, I'll introduce you to in a moment, let's just treat this as a sort of Q and A session. I want to hear from the panelists first of all, maybe take a couple of questions then. And what I'd like to do is have about 25 minutes at the end where we can just open it up and all discuss these issues between us, so many SDGs as we know. Just to introduce our panel, Osamu Akabayashi at the end, Director, Department of International Affairs at the Japan Science and Technology Agency. His, the title of his presentation, Goals or Own Goals: The Backstory to Setting the SDGs and Progress to Date. Next to him, Professor Hartung, who arrived here at 5:00 AM, having gone through Barcelona and somewhere else where he's been developing, giving keynote addresses. You're looking remarkably fresh, Thomas. Professor in chair for evidence-based toxicology Johns Hopkins. New technologies driving the future of healthcare and public health. Then Professor Jacqueline McGlade, University College London Earth Sciences, former chief scientist to the UN Environment Programme, former executive director of the European Environment Agency. She will be talking about environmental SDGs through the eyes of an insider. And then finally, Tofu White, many of you might have seen his brilliant TED Talk, which I watched just a few weeks ago, and he's talking about trees that can talk, how upcycled mobile technology can monitor and protect remote forests, enabling real-time interventions. Please do get involved. If you disagree with people, shout, heckle, but let them have their say. Osamu Akabayashi, if you'd like to start first of all.
Thank you very much for giving me a topic to talk about.
Oh, sorry.
The Sustainable Development Goals. I'm Osamu Akabayashi from Japan Science and Technology Agency. Today, in my talk, I'm going to tell two things. The first, how and why the SDGs came about as a successor to the Millennium Development Goals. Also, I'd like to mention the features and concerns of the SDGs. And the second, the role of Science, Technology and Innovation, STI, to achieve the goals. I'm mentioning one good example of S and T implementation done by us and an activity to achieve the goals on the road to 2030. Okay, first, oh, sorry. How and why the SDGs came about as a successor to the MDGs? I think there are three major backgrounds which resulted in the formulation of the SDGs. The first one is trends of development of the world. As it is known, the several development goals which had been adopted by the United Nations since 1990s were integrated into the MDGs at the beginning of 2000, which are mainly on the problems of developing countries such as extreme poverty, maternal health and the child mortality, et cetera. While some of the goals, such as cutting by half the share of people who live in extreme poverty, have been reached, others, such as improving maternal health and reducing the child mortality, could not be achieved by 2015 as they were planned. Therefore, more continuous commitments to these issues have still been necessary as the development goals to be achieved. The second, the global environmental issues and the trend of sustainable development. In 1992, the Climate Change Framework Convention was adopted at the United Nations as summit and the conference of the parties started, where seriousness of planetary boundary has been recognized more and more through environmental issues like global warming and freshwater usage and so on. And the third one, the new trend of science. The new trend or movement of science, pushed by the Declaration on Science and the Use of Scientific Knowledge in 1999, also known as the Budapest Declaration, is also one of the key backgrounds. The declaration states that the sciences should be the service of humanity as a whole and should contribute to provide everyone with a deeper understanding of nature and society, a better quality of life and a sustainable and healthy environment for the present and future generations. It defined new roles of science, namely, science for development and science in society and for society, in addition to science for knowledge. Progress of three backgrounds, the Sustainable Development, Global Environment and Science and for society, resulted in SDGs through the Rio plus 20 in 2012. This slide shows the relations between SDGs and its predecessor, MDGs. MDGs were formulated based on the report, Shaping the 21st Century, adopted by the Development Assistance Committee of OECD. They were determined by the top-down approach for developing countries and that their theme, their goals are very specific. In the meanwhile, SDGs were formulated through the discussion at the Open Committee of United Nations, where opinions and suggestions from about 70 countries and civil society were taken into account. This is a bottom-up approach and these agenda, these goals for both developing and developed countries are very universal. Therefore, the SDGs reflects not only development issues on which attention focused under the MDGs, which are supported to be tackled more deeply in the SDGs, but also comprehensive environmental and societal issues. I'd like to mention the features and concerns of the SDGs. After a round of negotiations, the SDGs were formulated to require, in consideration of socially vulnerable people, to solve issues in an integrated manner with no one left behind, through initiatives to address a broad range of economic, societal and environmental issues. The SDGs pursue objectives which should sometimes be approached from different angles, such as development and economic prosperity, environmental protection and the realization of social justice. As a result, it is pointed out that implementing the SDGs is an integrated manner is not an easy task. It is also said that too many goals and too many targets, therefore, hard to understand and hard to communicate. This might be one of the most serious concerns of the SDGs, I think. But at the same time, this concern can be a chance for the SDGs, because each goal of the SDGs is closely interlinked each other. We should consider them from holistic and balanced viewpoint when we try to achieve the goals. We have to think about the nexus among goals like energy, climate and city. To tackle issues, taking into account the nexus of each goal and achieve them, Science, Technology and Innovation, STI, can play a very important role, I think. As everyone may agree, STI, despite many difficulties it experienced, has played a major role in enriching the lives of the people and protecting them against the natural disasters in the history of humankind. Now, it can contribute to the achievement of the SDGs as a deciding factor for making the best use of the limited resources. STI can also contribute to the achievement of the SDGs as a bridging force which unites different disciplines, sectors like private and the public, the countries and regions, thereby opening a path to create a society for the future generation while interlinking these goals. Then what kind of action we should take with utilization of STI to achieve the goals? Need to focus on matchmaking among existing problems and existing solutions based on scientific evidence to provide solutions. Then discussing nexus among goals with various stakeholders, the stakeholders beyond disciplines, sectors like academia and business and the countries, regions, to mitigate the constraint of the planetary boundaries. Finally, pursuing the disruptive STI to resolve the constraint while social issues in scope and fostering human capability for sustainability, this is a very important point. So let me introduce, there is one good example of STI's contribution to achieve the SDGs. This is a case supported by us, JST, in cooperation with Development Aid Agency in Japan. The research collaboration among researchers from Japan, I mean, various stakeholders, including researchers from Japan and from developing countries. Usually, science and technology research should pursue development of cutting-edge science and technology, but sometimes it is not always true for the countries where that kind of advanced science and technology is not really needed. In such countries, sometimes the cutting-edge technology becomes no use, because it is too much for them. Actually, developing countries have a strong need for R and D based on their local needs, which can be utilized for society, which can be utilized for their lives. To meet these needs, these needs, the cooperation with someone who is familiar with local needs is very important. We could also find one of the biggest local requirement to the S and T cooperation is fostering human resources with high knowledge for their sustainable development, rather than acquiring the research outcomes through research activities. Thus, in this programme, we stress the human resource development for sustainability in addition to the pursuing the research outcomes. The fostering the human capability is the key for the sustainable development. It is going to take time to foster human capability, but it must be the fastest way to reach and achieve the goal in the long run, I believe. So with regard to the STI for the SDGs, this is just for your information, the, this kind of, the conference were held in 2017 so far, and from this STI for SDGs meeting, these conclusions were proposed, the statement are proposed, and these are, these said almost, you know, same things what I mentioned during my speech. Also, this is a book of Japan's practice.
For SDGs?
Sorry, I only mention about Japan because I'm from Japan. So you can have the, you know, the copy, some copy of that over there, so for your information. So this includes, you know, the best practice of the Japanese activities made by public sectors, made by the private sectors, so it can be, you know, very good information for you. So today, yes, I talked about, you know, the three background of the SDGs and how STI can contribute to the SDGs. So thank you very much for your attention.
Osamu, thank you for, just stay there for a moment. Just one question for me, I mean, do you think the, these SDGs are achievable? Do you think they're achievable?
That these goals?
Yeah.
Okay, so that is a very good and a very difficult question. So actually, the barriers and the meaning of these goals is to set us the target, the common values, and if, you know, as many people as possible can their, can make their best effort to achieve these goals, yes, we can do that, yeah?
Okay, just some questions from the floor just before, sir.
Um, so I have a slightly ideological question, so forgive me for that, but I'm wondering in general whether you think there's a compatibility or an incompatibility between mainstream economic dogma and how globally we think of the right way to run an economy and sustainable development goals? And whether we've seen perhaps over the last 30 or 40 years since the kind of Reagan-Thatcher era, focusing on individualism and maybe shifting the burden of things like the sustainable development goals, maybe they didn't exist, towards charitable endeavors as opposed to global top-down approaches? And whether you think, I'm nearly done, actually. Whether you think, do we need to change the way we think of economics before we can hope to even address a lot of these goals?
Okay, so yes, that's also very good question, yeah. And economics and, you know, development, yes, it's kind of, you know, looks like contradictory, but recently, in Japan's case, the companies, the private sectors, start to, you know, understand the value of the SDGs. So as a, you know, as a one of the activities of their CSV, creating shared values. So if the, you know, the private sectors think much of that kind of values, then they can make balance between their economics activities and contribution to the, this kind of, you know, development goals. So that kind of balance is very important, I think.
Hello, good morning. I'm Mrs Moktar from the International Atomic Energy Agency, and we use the science, technology and innovation to help member states for SDGs. So, but I'm wondering, it's the SDG 17, but my question is that many member states, they did not put it as a priority and no money, no budget to use science, technology and innovation for, toward the, we don't see a plan, we don't see momentum. So do you have?
Okay. So I think, okay, this, this is a very common and the universal sense of value for the human being, so why don't they have the momentum? Yes, okay, that is my question, anyway. So in, in our case, so because we put a lot of values onto these, you know, agenda, so in Japan case, in case of JST anyway, from Department of International Affairs, we put a lot of money to, you know, yeah, 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 so maybe we can bridge the people from, you know, Japan and the people from developing countries, or maybe developed countries as well, so this is, you know, goals for the, you know, both of them. So, yeah, because we see this is very important, so we put the money, yes.
Yeah, thank you. I would just to make the comment that you listed complexity as being one of the concerns on the SDGs, and I really have to say that the complexity was necessary somehow to account for the interactions and for still being inclusive. So it is, it is a challenge, but at the same time, it's really necessary, and that's to avoid perhaps some of the shortcomings in the MTGs. Thank you.
Yeah, quite right, yes.
Okay, just take one, one special. Thank you for this interesting presentation. I'm Jamel Jabali from Tunisia. I would like to know if there's 17 sister naval development goals are applicable in developing country. If yes, how?
Yeah, yes, applicable to the individual country, I think, because this is a very common. As I said, these, you know, goals were adopted not by the, you know, very, you know, the committees by, you know, inside of the closed door, but this one, these one were adopted by the very open, you know, discussion by the, you know, more than 70 countries. So you can, you know, find something which is applicable for your country, you know, each individual, individual countries, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Right, I think we should move on. Thomas, thank you very much. Thank you.
Good. Okay. Good. So, my background is a physician and biochemist, working at Johns Hopkins in public health and as a pharmacologist, professor of pharmacology in Germany. So I have both sides of the sides of health, prevention, public health and treatment. My portfolio was asked to focus on just one of the Sustainable Development Goals, which is health. Obviously, personally, one of the most important ones, which has many aspects, will focus only on scientific progress and how much this also produces inequality and opportunity. Focusing on this technological developments. Health is wealth, we too often forget until we don't have it any longer, that this is the case, and it is about longevity and well-being, if we want to say in very simple terms. So do we achieve this in a context where there is still a lot of imperfections in our health systems? If you give the look, healthcare access and inequality is a problem on a nation level as well as internationally. In the US, one party is at the moment trying desperately to get 24 million out of health support and insurance. This is inequality, this is creating strong social differences. But we also see that the system is not very efficient if we just look again, there is 210 billion spent every year just for procedures which are meant to void liabilities for the physicians. So this, okay, there is also tremendous needs for treatments out of 3,000 diseases and about 500 have some cures and treatments. There's a new pandemic of obesity, there's autism, childhood asthma, and others which are coming up dramatically. At the same time, the system has become less and less payable, nent the seven percent of the drugs after development costs of several hundred million fail when they come to human trials, and that costs us on average 1.4 billion to 8 billion, the most recent estimates to get a successful drug on the market. And we're spending a lot of money, Europe about 15% of the GDP, 13 to 15%, the US is already at the moment at 17% and is approaching 20% in the near future. But we have to say, we achieved one goal, which is longevity. This, this figure here, article in Nature in 2018, since from 1840 to 2040, we have a consistent increase in longevity. Every year of children which is born is getting one month older than here before, in this since 1840 to now. And this is, this question is, are we simply suffering longer in the end, or are we actually gaining something in life quality? And here again, the answer is pretty simple, we're longer healthy. About 10 years of decay is the average for us, from healthy state, you can say also six, this is the new 40, it is a really dramatic change in what being old means. So you see, if you know, see where does it come from, we're first of all declining early and midlife mortality in the beginning, in the late 1900s, 1900s, which is due to nutrition and hygiene, then the progress against infectious diseases with vaccines and antibiotics, and then we achieve the decline now in late life mortality, which is mainly due to the introduction of medicines. Two-thirds of the gain in long, in long life is actually due to the introduction of new pharmaceuticals, again, something which is not available equally to everybody. And there's new diseases, autism is one which is interesting, me personally very much, we work on this topic, and this is the numbers of autism cases in American children, you can see that this has risen since 1970 dramatically, now one in 60 age children born is diagnosed with autism. And I believe very much that this will burn off the larger chemical testing programs of the near future because somebody, at some point, society wants to know what is contributing to these numbers. I don't have the time to talk about what is interesting in this area, this is an article, I'm happy to provide you, please send, just send me an email about our thoughts and approaches. One of the big problems, and this is we're using still rat models, and we're simply not 70 kilogram rats. This is something which is key, but we see progress, technological progress to identify new substances, and for example, our work is around a human mini brain, which is produced from skin cells of donors, and then we convert from there, with their material into stem cells, and we grow beautiful mini brains. These mini brains are very, very precisely produced around 250 micrometer in diameter, they have, they can be done in different genetic backgrounds, also from autistic children, for example, and we can test new substance which we suspect to be toxic or substance which might represent treatments for these cases. They are spontaneously communicating, they have not only the neuron cells, but also the glial cells of the, of the brain. The diseases like autism can clearly not be explained just by chemicals or just by genetics. Genetic would not change that fast, so our idea is very simple, there could be susceptibility disposition to toxins and this type of synergy is actually what we now already identified for the first few risk factors genetically and on the side of chemicals. When we announced the development of these mini brains, there was a tremendous interest at the triple S last year, we made it even on the front page of the Financial Times, must produce mini brains to spark research of drug testing on animals. And you can imagine that this has now tremendous opportunities, shows how the advance in basic sciences and producing organ models, so no longer cells lying like eggs in sunny side up in a, in a pen, but really functional architectural things. And so we, in the meantime, study stroke, trauma and toxicity, infected them with viruses like Zika and HIV and looking in But they can also move into personalized medicine, with these approaches, you might be aware of the glioblastoma, childhood cancer, but I put up the picture of John McCain as a prominent adult patient at the moment, so it's not restricted to kids. But you can see here in the, in the top is such a healthy mini brain, which we grafted such glioblastoma, and what this enables now is an example of personalized medicine, because you can either develop drugs which are more targeted and actually test in human materials and thousands of brains, or you could for a given patient start looking into what is out of two hundred chemotherapy, we have what would be the best one. Another example, which is at the moment a revolution in healthcare system, it's in all other industries, is artificial intelligence, big data, machine learning. I take, again, an example from our own work, how can we assess a hundred forty thousand chemicals which are from consumer products, most of them have never been tested. Certainly not by testing on animals, where for example, the test, the safety test, the pesticide is twenty million. So what we've been doing, we have collected the data of the past, created a database with seventy million structures, chemists have developed, three hundred thousand of them have some type of biological data, twenty thousand, therefore, animal data. And then we can produce a chemical similarity map, so chemicals which are close to each other are similar. And then very often, we see that there's a clustering of toxic substances, for example, for which we have data, and there's a clustering of non-toxic substances. And with half a billion calculations for one chemical, and this is the real chemical database, which we can zoom in, and you can see here at this level, we can finally see the difference in substances and the closer the demo is similar there. And then you can start putting red points for toxic substances and green ones for non-toxic ones. And together with other laboratories, UL, which is the US standard organization, we produced a program, and this program actually identifies eighty percent of toxic substances correctly, if we check those substances which we have data. And this is applicable to two thirds of the chemical universe. So it's a tool, where you push a button, in seconds get now information on the quality level of an animal test, if you only have data which are close enough to those who are interested in. This is only giving you two examples, computer and better cell culture to advance, but there's many other prospects, besides avoiding toxins, not only for the children, but also for the elderly. There's new treatments coming up, reproductive medicine with cell and gene therapies, and they will show a few examples of these things here in a rush to this. This is my friend Tony Attala, who was the first to bioprint an organ, in this case, a urinary bladder, which was transplanted in a patient. So we are close to really printing organs. And at the meantime, he has produced a printer big enough here to print in here, but there's also for larger organs now printing opportunities. Only in August this year, the first gene therapy was accepted. You might find it crazy that for this leukemia treatment, the cost are four hundred seventy-five thousand for a single treatment. But this is only used for children who have relapse after the first treatment, and the standard therapy which is being applied in the US would be around nine hundred thousand dollars. So it's cutting by half on effect, this thing, ninety percent of the children were healed with this treatment. So it's actually demonstrating advance in this. There's then movement towards anti-aging. It sounds like science fiction to develop drugs which actually make you older, but in effect, the FDA has just accepted the first test, test on clinical trial, and actually very old substances met from what was introduced in the clinics already in the fifties. And there is expectation that this could extend this single drug to a hundred, to a hundred twenty years of average lifetime. So you see, there is advances also and this, this does not mean that this is good thing to help us with sustainability goals if everybody gets considered be older. But I should also be aware that access to whatever these therapies are, already hit different starting point. This is the life expectancy at birth in different countries, and this ranges from thirty-five years to eighty-five years at this moment. And this is inequality, which is only getting bigger with the more expensive therapies which are coming into reach at this moment. Coming back to our, to our one hundred-year-old women here, this is the last thing I would like to address, dramatic impact on longevity is possibly coming via the anti-smoking campaigns. And the reason for this is first of all, that is such a deadly habit. If you, the WHO had calculated that in the century only one billion people will die from smoking. And very impressive calculation based on fifty thousand people studied, if you start smoking at the age eighteen, eighteen cigarettes per day, you live on average ten years less than others. This shows the enormous impact of this symbol, this single risk factor. And the game changes actually is cigarettes. Cigarettes is very different acceptance have been introduced in various countries. We know that they have only three to five percent the risk of regular cigarettes. Imagine going down from one billion to fifty million being killed would be fantastic public health effort. But also, it will still be a product which kills fifty million people. And if no other product would be allowed to get to the market nowadays, this type of numbers. Again, I can refer you to a few articles I published in over the last two years on this topic and the opportunities and challenges. The biggest one is that eight thousand different flavors have been introduced, from cheesecake to strawberries, gin and tonic, you have it all. None of these have been tested for this application, none of them are really found safe, and we could talk about this much longer. But it is again, because of the sheer numbers asking for new technologies, things like this long-on-a-chip, which was developed in Harvard, and this is the type of work we're pursuing in our center for alternative testing in Hopkins, because we believe that it is about human relevant types of models, which are cheaper, faster, and allow us to accompany these developments. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. This is, what I said, is the problem on a global level, we're producing inequality, and the access to this technology is problematic. But many of these technologies are actually pretty cheap. If I test in animals on developmental neurotoxicity, I pay one point four million for one chemical. Our mini brains, we produce at less than one dollar a piece. So you can imagine how much more testing is possible with these new technologies, and this is going directly to prevention. And prevention is the most effective way of impacting on the, on the health.
So when, you know, the, the, the umbrella goal of the SDGs is no one is left behind. I mean, are you confident that that can be achieved within reason?
Because we have global industries making products, in this case pharmaceuticals, safer or consumer products which bear risks identified, we serve the entire globe. However, certain therapies, at least in the beginning, can be extremely expensive, but we also see that they go down dramatically as soon as they are mass-produced and as soon as they go out of patent. So there certainly, however, face where there's advantage for the first world, the self-proclaimed first world compared to others. And that's something we have to work on by changing, exchanging, by working together and finding other business models.
Okay, in thirteen years, right. Lots of questions.
Thank you for a great talk. As someone coming from the fossil world in some sense, like just coming from the States, for example, and seeing a huge difference in the number of obese people here and in the States or in the UK where I'm currently studying, would you mind maybe commenting on the, when you mentioned the tobacco, I have a feeling that sugar is something that in ten years, twenty years might actually have exactly the same policy basically put on it somehow, and then huge changes on how much, huge impact on public health. So would you mind then commenting on new research coming there?
Yeah, some people have said that sugar is the tobacco of the twenty-first century. I believe very much that sugar is, for example, much more unhealthy than fat, and we have been geared in the wrong direction to mainly address the fat issues because obesity syndrome and metabolic syndromes resulting from sugar are from my personal point of view more important. However, there's also discussion whether certain chemicals are contributing, or bisogens, whether something like this exists, and again, it needs mass testing, and so we will also have to develop things to address and identify such things to prevent this. But what we mainly see is seems to be a social factor, the degree of obesity always is advanced in the, in the poorer income populations in the US, for example, that you can show this very nicely. So it is a very complex thing, but I think one we definitely need to address. If you don't want, perhaps make this even a turning point, there's had already been headlines saying that this generation of Americans might be the first which does not live longer than their parents, because it is such a dramatic health effect.
If you'd like to, thank you very much indeed, Thomas.
So, great to, great to talk to you all. Originally, I was thinking that SDGs from an insider point of view referred very much to my role when I was in UN Environment, working in member states, and really trying to, how can I say, extend the art of the possible, of impregnating the indicator world and the statistical world with real science. And so what happened, just so that you kind of get the sense of it, we had suddenly goals and then we had targets, and a lot of thinking people, including lawyers, ambassadors, everyone was saying, it's not a very good match, what can science really come up with? And on the other side, we had a whole bunch of statisticians saying, whoa, you know, hang on a minute, we have to collect the data and we know nothing about spatially disaggregated data, we don't know about satellite imaging, we don't know about the oceans, we don't know about all these things, so no, we can't do it. So a sort of compromise, a backroom compromise began to emerge, which was that the scientists would make their very best efforts in a way to say, well, look, there's a tier one, which is, we can do it today. So let's just kind of get those up and going. And then what became known as the tier two and tier three indicators were the ones where we weren't quite ready, science had to be sort of put on the table, maybe tested, metadata, discussed and so forth. And that would have been the perfect universe, except that they wanted them at the same time as the first round. So the scientists were kind of backed into a corner, and I won't say it was a perfect outcome, it was certainly better than it, than I expected at the very beginning. But I found that there was an enormous reluctance from many scientists to put themselves on the front foot and actually turn up with the idea that we're going to start generating data in two to three years, which will be fit for purpose, and for which member states will see themselves ranked. So the ocean certification people, all of them said, oh, we haven't got enough data, we're not ready, it's, you know, it's all too soon. But in the end, I said to them, look, it's now or never, because this is it. If you don't get in, you're going to be out for the next fifteen years. So let's, you know, best foot forward and let's see what we can, let's see how we can go. Fast forward one year, and I suddenly found myself in a different insider position, which is, and what I would like to talk to you about this morning, is how do you actually achieve the sustainable goals from the, from the perspective of the people who are really going to have to experience massive change? And so I just want to spend the next few minutes talking about, or what it's like to live amongst the Maasai, I got married to the Maasai chief in Kenya, what it is actually like to live at the ground level, but with me, a full card carrying SDG person, you see? So I asked permission of, you know, all of the tribe, can I treat you as my experimental group? So I got, I got the ethical tick, and then set about really thinking, well, what does it actually look like? So I'm going to do a romp through the SDGs, and I'm going to potentially suggest that maybe, you know, saying that this is a universal approach, it's good for developed and developing countries. Well, there's a lot that we can learn from developing countries, and I would like to switch this conversation to what is it the developed world is going to have as the take-home message? Because I can tell you, having lived on the ground for quite some time now, there are many, many things that are extremely interesting. So let's think about the SDGs, fully integrated, complex, fundamental drivers of change, this is all music to a scientist's ears, you know, managing the trade-offs and synergies. No, I don't believe we've got the right economic model, by the way, so I think we have to dump the one we've got and do something different, but that's a whole other series of lectures. But what this was, was the sort of bureaucratic approach to, you know, if you tackled healthy and productive ecosystems, you would be touching on many, many of the goals and so forth. So if you're a member state and you signed up dutifully to many, many agreements, you will, if you've done a good job in the environment and possibly on a few other areas, you will already be reporting on at least sixty percent of these indicators, not in the exact words, but the synergy mapping is rather large. So, you know, get over it, is what I used to say to some of the member states, just get over it and get on and do the job, because you're already committed. And then let's be much more innovative about how we're going to collect the data on all the other things. So what scale are we going to collect at? Are we going to do gender disaggregation? Well, let's take the lid off the household and instead of saying when you turn up to do a survey, not realizing that if the man is away and the lady answers the survey, you're going to get a whole bunch of different answers than if the guys answer the survey when you come to the door. So, you know, let's be a lot more innovative, and I can tell you for real, it actually happens. So let me take you on a very, very dusty but normal day in the Rift Valley, the other end of the Rift Valley, down in sort of semi-sub-Saharan Africa, in the Maasai Mara. It's dry, my god, is it dry. There's a drought, the plants are dying, the cattle are dying, it is unpleasant, but it's not in the headlines. So it's almost business as usual. That's the really sad fact about this. Nothing to report, business as usual, people dying, animals dying, plants dying, crops not working, and it's all pretty grim, really. Now, these are the Maasai, these are my, these are my fellow villagers, I live in that house, I actually live in a marhat, I live in that maniata behind where the young men are. These are the very young morans about to go out in the bush as part of their sort of life-changing moment, and these are the men who've come back, they're, they're young bachelors, they're allowed to get married, they've been in the bush, and they're jumping for their lives to see which wives they're going to get. And these are my ladies, and I call them my ladies because they really are, they're really lovely. And I, because I'm married to the chief, I actually do have warriors and I have ladies. But we all kind of, there's an enormous amount of equality, so it doesn't look like it from the outside, but actually, women get to say just as much as men, but they say it about different things. So if I was to do a diagnosis of this group, poor, yeah, less than zero dollars a day, there is no money, let's be very, very clear. And aid money doesn't, doesn't hack it here, there's zero money. In fact, they're working on a double negative economy, which is the cattle have died, but they think they've kind of got money in the cattle, but the cattle are so skinny that when they take them to sell, you know, they barely get to the market, all right? So this is just not a going concern to an economist. But there's six hundred and twenty-five people, six hundred and twenty-five thousand people who are just kind of living life, right? So poverty, hmm, it's an interesting concept when you're living actually on the ground like this. I always say they're busy doing nothing, they sit around, actually not doing a great deal, but they're doing one heck of a lot, they're computing life at an immensely complex and, what I would say, far-reaching way, and they have probably greater resilience than most people in the West. So let me kind of move on then, so poverty, so number one, hmm, well, we're not going to get there by counting dollars. Number two, we want to talk about food. Now, okay, if you're in the pastureist business and you've got livestock that's really on the edge, the first thing you're going to start to think about is, well, maybe I can't have five hundred cows anymore, maybe the land can't sustain it. So there was an exercise last year at the beginning of the drought, at the middle of the drought, and I said, look, you know, it's just not looking sustainable, why don't we rethink? If it was an academic exercise, it would have gone away, we would have run a large-scale model, taken about two years, got about five hundred thousand dollars, got a whole group of people together and come back with an answer. What they did was, for three days, they went away and talked about it, thought about the land, thought about how many animals they had, and they came back with, well, the answer is five. Not five hundred, not five thousand cows, five cows, five children, two wives. And it was all based on, we want our children to go to school, the land is deteriorating, people are fencing, conservances are fencing, et cetera, et cetera. So really, we have a whole different computation, and it was really based on their understanding of an enormous landscape, the whole of the southern part of the Rift Valley, they kind of computed in their head. Now, okay, if you're in the pasteurist business and you've got livestock that's really on the edge, the first thing you're going to start to think about is, "Well, maybe I can't have five hundred cows anymore, maybe the land can't sustain it." So there was an exercise last year at the beginning of the drought, at the middle of the drought, and I said, "Look, you know, it's just not looking sustainable, why don't we rethink? If it was an academic exercise, it would have gone away, we would have run a large-scale model, taken about two years, got about five hundred thousand dollars, got a whole group of people together and come back with an answer." What they did was, for three days, they went away and talked about it, thought about the land, thought about how many animals they had, and they came back with, "Well, the answer is five, not five hundred, not five thousand cows, five cows, five children, two wives." And it was all based on, "We want our children to go to school, the land is deteriorating, people are fencing, conservances are fencing, et cetera, et cetera." So really, we have a whole different computation, and it was really based on their understanding of an enormous landscape, the whole of the southern part of the Rift Valley, they'd kind of computed in their head. And they realised that the cattle were destroying the forests and were churning up the soil and everything else. So, lesson number one, really, really smart people, they all score about ninety percent, the kids, in the maths, so I think, you know, this is an interesting group of people. But they cook communally, even though they each have houses, and it's because there is a deep sense of fairness and equity amongst many, many tribes, and this is one way you see it, you know? It's not good to be seen to be way above your neighbour, there's a certain sort of equilibration amongst them. So, here, longevity, Thomas, I loved what you said about longevity, oops, for the rest of us, whoop, go back one. Right, so when I arrived and got married, it was because the gentleman here, who's got a quite formidable axe, which I brought him from Hungary, he's a hundred and four, and I have done my homework, I can absolutely guarantee, but he's surrounded by other men who are of a similar age. And he's decided he wants to retire, he says, "I've been doing the job for seventy years and I really want to retire." So that was it, you know, so, and I tell you, the day after Patrick, my husband, took over, he was the happiest man, he just went on a hundred-kilometre walk, you know, it was like the weight of the world lifted off him. So he's in pretty good shape, I would say, you know, he's fit, healthy, smart as a button, still gives very wise decisions, and essentially, as I said, longevity is intact. What has he eaten nearly all of his life? He's eaten, he's had two cups of milk a day, and meat maybe every fourth day, and a whole bunch of plants and herbs, that's about it, actually. So, you know, not too much fat going on there in terms of body fat, but a very, very interesting balance, because these animals have got special fat and everything else. Now, new generation comes along, and I kind of said, "Well, I think all the kids need to be in school." So sure enough, children are all in school, all children are in school, but their cultural attribution and education is also very live and well. What's sad is that the curriculum is completely sort of unsuited for the modern world, and I would make a plea, any of you in education, you need to go back, or we need to go back to the curriculum and think about SDGs and what it means for education, because it seems really balmy that these children are learning, really, it is like a Western education from the nineteen fifties, when you look at the books they're learning from, it says nothing about modern society. So, you know, my plea is, do that. What we're trying to do, of course, is to take young children and, you know, give them a creative curriculum. Girls and women, female circumcision or genital mutilation, certainly part of my bride price, we don't want to do that, so it is banned, it is illegal, and gradually, 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 you can see in many of the tribes, it's beginning to drop out, certainly in the Maasai, it doesn't exist to any extent at all. So you now have young girls like Nabala, and she's eight, carries a full raft of household duties, however, having put water and electricity in, now has time to read, and she's a really, really bright girl, as they all are, actually, once given a chance. So what they're always asking me, the girls, are, "You know, we want to go to college, we want to go to university, but then we would actually really like to come back." So here is an interesting concept of, we've seen the West, we kind of like a few things, but we don't really like all the consumption, we're not very keen on all of that, we actually like living in large village, where four hundred people all look after us and take care of us, in a sense, in the long term. Putting water in, the most fundamental thing, it is not expensive, I do not understand why we need to spend millions and millions of dollars thinking about it. So if you're in a semi-arid region, you're not going to have flush toilets, there's just not enough water around, so we have to get smart about how we use water, but more importantly, how we deliver it. Once we put water here, there were no more deaths from typhoid and from all the waterborne diseases, not one in a community of ten thousand people. When I arrived, there were at least twenty a week. So, you know, water is just so clearly the thing you need to fix, and of course, you know, open defecation and get the toilets in, but these are sort of long-drop-dry toilets as well. Putting energy in, putting lighting in, and taking cooking outside of the houses, the clean cookstoves, it's all really basic stuff, but I started really documenting the numbers of deaths and the sort of, the health impacts of just taking cooking out of houses. So you see here in our modern mud huts, we don't have an indoor fire, we have a clean cookstove, we have lighting, and actually, we don't, it's not like living in a bonfire, it really is a very, very pleasant experience. So, you know, the things do work, we know what to do, but we actually get overwhelmed by saying, "Oh, we need lots and lots of money", in fact, you don't need a lot of money to fix many of these problems here. Then looking about livelihoods, we have to be much more creative. The gentleman on the left, Jack, he is working with me to plant thousands and thousands of medicinal trees and plants. We have probably forty plants that are right up there when it comes to antimicrobials, for livestock treatments, for veterinarians, and so on, and we're slowly going through a process to make them public goods. We have decided that we need to make them public goods so they don't get stolen from underneath our feet, and then create regenerative clinics where you combine maybe the best of the West, what Thomas is doing, with some of these much more close-to-home, affordable drugs and treatments. And on the right-hand side is Eric Nongedik, he's an amazing wildlife conservation tracker, so, you know, we have people who really understand the natural world, and they're not really fit for being just tourist toys. We have a huge amount of poverty tourism, people coming and wanting to gawk and see the dirty children and all of that. It just is so demeaning when you've got people who really could take you out on a wildlife trip and tell you everything about giraffes and all the animals you want to know, and a much deeper understanding than most academics. Innovation, so this is the one and only solar-driven, two-stage burner incinerator in Africa, all right? It goes to sixteen hundred degrees, it will destroy plastics. So this is our contribution to the oceans, because having now installed it, there are really no more single-use plastic bags around. Even though they were banned, fantastic, from the top down, but they just blow down the Rift Valley, and so they're on every single tree and they're everywhere, and they're just horrible, horrible things, you know? So this has instigated a complete mind shift, because there's solar power, there's, you know, everything going on, but what it showed to the local Maasai was, actually, we can do this, we can have innovation that is as good as anybody else in the world, and, yeah, we can run it. Now, I just want to tell you one thing about the ladies, so it's quite a complicated piece of technology, and it rise with dials and everything else. So none of the ladies of the ages between twenty and forty have ever been to school, they don't read and write, they don't even understand what the concept of reading and writing actually is. I wrote my name on the outside of my house and they couldn't understand, they thought it was a pattern, and then when I read it, and then I wrote something down initially, they kind of said, "Well, what's that?", and I said, "Well, that's reading and that's writing." One year on, many of them can read and write, but they run the whole incinerator, all of the technology, everything, they're much better than the men at it, I can tell you, they're more accurate, they're very, very good at it. So we need to really think carefully about where we place innovation, and really make sure that people are trained up to do that. So this is where it kind of takes a leap of faith, so I'm building a space research centre here amongst the Maasai, and if you show a Maasai a map, they don't understand it, they don't understand the icon, they just don't get the codification, but if you show them a landsat image, an earth observation image, they get it straight away, they understand it immediately. And so we're busily putting these onto their smartphones and they're marking where animals are, where their livestock are, and so forth. So it's a kind of interesting concept, that you shouldn't necessarily have to go, as we always say, through all the steps. By the time we've got to here, we're into sort of discussions about equality within the country and outside. The Maasai, although they're the iconic tribe for Africa, are the least supported, subsidised, whatever you want to call it, tribe, actually in Kenya and in much of Africa. So they're very, very clear that their destiny and their future and their sustainability is going to reside upon internal and well-oiled levels of reducing conflict. So they have a very, very sophisticated way of resolving conflicts and issues across borders, between tribes, and so forth. And, you know, it's remarkable, the level of de-stressing that these kinds of processes have. So once again, you know, you don't go to lawyers, you go to your chief, you go to a black stick and you negotiate over a black stick, and the black stick, if it's ever picked up and pointed at you, is essentially a sign of you are sent away, you know, you are essentially sent out of the tribe, never to return again. And if you're out in the bush, of course, you will die, because something will eat you probably that night. So it's very, very dark and very, very black and white. So I think what I want to conclude with is, at every single level, whether it's young morans about to go in the bush for a few months, or even from Tanzania, they go for six years, there's a deep belief in hierarchy, of respect for each other and for nature, of respect for innovation, they all have smartphones, they communicate like crazy with each other using smartphones, they have a language that's not written down, but is becoming written down, because we're using smartphones, but it is a beautiful language, it's a language, no word "I", only has the word "we", you wake in the morning and you're relieved that you're alive, you greet the day saying, "God, you survived, nothing ate you", and you get through the day and in the end, you say, "Go to bed and I hope you survive the night." So forget yesterday, that's the past, and don't worry too much about the future, because it might not happen, but, you know, they still manage to plan things and are very, very, very clever and innovative about how they deal with life. Whether it's sort of beehives, thinking, "Oh, actually, we could take on the manuka industry, because our croton is just as powerful an antibiotic as any manuka tree", so, you know, waiting for the croton to hit the marketplace, to realising that when you live in these kinds of maniattas, you're very, very open to the possibility of sand and dust storms, so you have to plant trees, and then, hey, you could actually probably change the microclimate, so they're thinking, busily thinking about that. Houses which are more and more likely to survive for ten, fifteen years, because they're slightly changing the construction of them, so they've thought about intense rainstorms, and they've adapted the internal structures to be able to withstand those rainstorms very impressively, and then understanding that actually, having cattle which die is not such a great bank account, and really, what you need to do is think about food and schooling in a much, much better way, and so, you know, having food stores when times are really bad is now becoming part of the way that the Maasai will think. You can always move it, you're a pastorist, semi-nomadic, always take it with you, but don't leave it on four legs out in a field, because it might not be there tomorrow. Yeah, it might not be there tomorrow. Sad thing was that when these cattle died, most of them died not because of the drought, but because of plastic bags, they were filled with plastic bags, so it's a kind of, it's not pleasant. If ever you want to come, open invitation. The Maasai Mara is just the most amazing place on earth, it's got wildlife like you can't believe, but the wildlife are changing as well. So now, there is one of the healthiest populations of lions you can imagine, cheetahs and all these animals, chomping their way through cattle, through zebras and everything, so conservation is alive and well, but actually, so are the people, and they are saying again and again, "We'll go to Nairobi, we'll go out to the West, but we will always come home, because that's where we feel that we are a team." These are some of our partners who've shown interest, from Cambridge University to some of the Premier League teams, there is something about them, they are fearless, they have resilience beyond anything I've ever really experienced, even when I worked in the Arctic, and I think we could take a leaf out of their books, and that's what I look at when I go to bed. Thank you.
Fascinating, some questions from the floor, who would like? We've heard from you before, can I just take one other before? Anyone else?
Oh, this is all SDGs, and I have measured for you the things, by the way, so.
Actually, I'm. So, actually, I kind of want to rephrase my previous question and ask it again, and perhaps see whether, what kind of perspective this stuff you're talking about can offer, and whether you think realistically, there are things about tribal culture, whether it's the Maasai Mara or even Bedouins in Jordan, or that we can actually, in reality, transfer to other parts of the world to kind of claw back some of that community socio-economic model in real ways, not just in a, wouldn't it be great if we all kind of, yes, of course?
Yes, I mean, I think fundamentally, there is, I think fundamentally. Lee, what I perceive, and I'm very, very curious about sort of the brain structures and MRIs, because they don't suffer from malnutrition, and the, because we've taken some of the tribe, some people from the community in to have MRI scans, they don't show any signs of the brain traumas that I was showing on the first day of children in refugee camps who've been exposed to mal, undernutrition particularly. So what is it that they're getting from a very sparse diet that nevertheless means that brain function actually is all there? So that was one question I was very curious about, because they have full executive powers, they are all there, and I think that's what I would learn from the tribe and from that approach, is there is something about the development of cognitive, your cognitive development and executive powers that is really very, very powerful. You know, you don't react violently, you do different things. Now, it's not the same in all tribes, so I'm very, very curious as to what it is about the whole sort of ethos, but also the hierarchy and how children themselves sit in that society, and I think that's where we could learn a great deal.
So, I talked about, how much of a debate is there between those who want to pursue new technology, which might actually erode that idea of the Maasai Mara, and those who say, "Actually, we need to go for this, because this is the only way we're going to survive"?
Well, I mean, obviously, I'm asked that all the time, because I'm opening a research centre there, and putting sort of innovation in left, right, and centre. What they actually want are proper jobs, they don't want crappy jobs in the tourist industry, which disappear and come and go, but you can imagine doing a proper job from some period of the, some hours in the day, and still going home and having a fantastic community life, and I think that's how they see their future. They don't want to be left behind, they're fully engaged, as I say, with smartphones and they get it, I mean, they're more connected than probably most of you, I have to admit, it's quite impressive how they get information at their fingertips, but they don't want to give up on that community side of things. So we had long, long talks about this, about why they would never want to live in big cities and Nairobi and so on, but on the other hand, they want satellite imaging, they want microgrids, they want to be able to create industries that have got carbon nanotubes and make new building materials and so on.
One question for you, sir. I've got Stefan.
Are you sure? Okay, all right. Two for White, no.
Thanks. So, to follow up all of these amazing presentations, I'm going to talk about one very specific approach to one of the problems that is tackled by the SDGs, but to do that first, I'm going to kind of take you guys back to one experience that I had a few years ago, because I think it kind of puts a lot of this stuff in context. So, this is the sound of the rainforest. In the summer of 2012, I visited the rainforest of Boignyot for the first time, and what kind of struck me the most was the cacophony of noise, there's so much stuff happening all the time, but there's some things that stick out. For example, sometimes there's these form-bills, these large birds, they kind of, they're cicadas, these animals, they kind of get in there. And then occasionally, there's these gibbons, these loud, these huge apes, that kind of take it over. It's a magical place. So this place that I was visiting actually was a gibbon reserve, they would rehabilitate these apes here and release them into the wild, but what we kind of figured out quickly upon visiting them was that they were actually spending a lot of their time trying to stop illegal logging that was happening on the outskirts. They had three full-time guards who were going out to get it, and in fact, behind the sounds, which we were hearing that entire time, there was actually the sounds of chainsaws, and it was actually indication to me that even in an area of just a few hundred hectares of forest, few full-time guards were having that much trouble actually locating the chainsaws in time to make a difference in this one area. And even just five minutes' walk from the ranger station one day, stumbled upon some loggers who were cutting down a tree, and they managed to get away, but the people who were running this place were pretty broken by that. So really, if you think about this on a larger scale, how do we stop illegal logging? How do we stop deforestation? It's worth first noting why we actually should focus on that as part of the SDGs, obviously, there are many local people, as mentioned here, that want to be protected, but also just from a point of view of climate change, deforestation is actually the second-largest contributor to climate change. The carbon emitted every year is more than all the planes, trains, cars, trucks, ships combined, more than all the transportation put together. A lot of this is driven by the carbon that's released from the ground when it's cut down, it's really an amazing issue. And on top of that, up to ninety percent of all the rainforest logging that takes place, where a lot of this carbon comes from, is illegal, based on Interpol studies, which means that if it's illegal, there's a mandate to stop it, and if you can stop it, it could be the fastest, cheapest way for us to fight climate change on the whole. Not all deforestation is, of course, from illegal logging, but I'll talk about why that matters a little bit later. There's a lot of techno, so, I'm a physicist. There's a lot of techno, so, I'm a physicist originally, and technology, of course, we always think about that as a great way to solve problems. There's many technologies out there that do, just deforestation, of course, satellites, camera traps, community monitoring with smartphones, planes and just drones. These are all pretty fancy ways of doing it. But in all these cases, it's either very expensive or it's actually kind of hard to get in there. So, really, if you think about it, we have to come up with some way, there's a real time, but what's the highest end way that we can create real-time intervention and kind of use what's already there? So, this is the rainforest. It's not Silicon Valley where I'm from. You can't just build a super high-tech app. We're always sort of thinking the highest tech things are the most important, the most relevant. But of course, in the rainforest, as was mentioned earlier, local R&amp;D and local infrastructure is super important. So, what was in this one place that we looked? Well, there were people. There were people there who would stop it if they could, they knew where it was, they were motivated to do it. And in fact, there was actually pretty good cellphone service in the forest, out in the middle of nowhere. No roads, no running water, no electricity, but they would charge their phones once a day on a generator and surf Facebook and the web and all those things. So, it's actually pretty good connectivity. So, in that case, you really could have this system where like the moment a chainsaw goes in the forest, it's picked up by the sound, it goes to the cloud, we analyse it, pick out the sounds of chainsaws, automatically alert local rangers who take off and actually catch people on the spot. That's this, you know, idea of how you really could help get in the way. This could make it safer for the rangers, for the guards, it could make it safer for the loggers even, because there's less damage done by the time they get there. But, you know, you need some device. Well, you know, as was mentioned earlier, phones are everywhere. Phones are pretty awesome little computers, they're full of sensors, they have everything they need, they can connect to networks. And it turns out, if you put them in a box with some solar panels, they can last for years up in the forest, listening to all the sounds. There's hundreds of millions of them thrown away every year, and even off in the forest, these indigenous folks that have them, even they're coming up on their second smartphone. So, it could be something that's actually built from entirely sort of recycled materials. And in fact, that's what this is. This is a phone in a box that's running off solar panel shards that are sort of put together from discarded solar panels, put it up in a tree and it can last for years listening. It's pretty easy to put together, which is the idea, of course, because we don't want to be responsible for making enough phones to go off into the forest, and there's no need for that anyway. So, really, you know, it's one thing to build that in a parent's garage years ago, but to actually test it and make sure it works, took it back to Indonesia, put it up in the trees, and on the second day, this was actually somewhat unexpected, picked up the sounds of chainsaws and they ran off and actually managed to catch them. This is just to show that it's actually fairly, fairly easy for a computer to pick these things out, which is helpful because you want computers to be able to do this. It's actually better than people, because they can pick out the sounds of chainsaws they can't. In this way, you can actually pick up the sounds of chainsaws and vehicles up to a kilometre in the distance, which, you know, if you think about it, one device is able to cover three square kilometres of forest. That's immensely important because fifteen thousand tonnes of CO2 are in the soil of these forests. If that forest disappears, it becomes released, which means that one old smartphone that these people put up there could be equivalent to three thousand cars off the road. It's actually a really impactful thing and the people on the ground can be responsible for most of the implementation. And the reason this actually gets even more complex is that you don't actually have to cover the entire forest. What we found is that logging is what generally creates the roads, is the most lucrative way to exploit the forest. Those roads are incredibly destructive because once the roads are there, people go in, they cut the forest down for other ways. And so, even just one road that you saw there can lead to pretty massive deforestation and huge releases of carbon, as seen here in Brazil. But with the people on the ground, there's a lot of people who would like to stop it. So, going on to Africa from Indonesia, this is that exact concept. This is actually a sustainable logging concession in Cameroon. This one road up here in the north was the one access point into and out of this place. There was massively legal logging taking place there. And everyone assumed, oh, this is actually the gate it all went out of. Everyone assumed that these guys were being paid off to let logging trucks in and out. And there's a lot of legal, sort of a lot of endangered species as well. We put this up along the road and realised that, if you listen. So, that's a motorcycle passing at about five in the morning and was able to show that they were actually not corrupt at all. But even just this, this is how it can be used to help catch illegal loggers, there were some interventions. But let's go to South America really quick. Here you have the Amazon, the biggest rainforest in the world. You have this massive ocean of deforestation with just a few islands of forest on the outskirts. What are those? Those are not actually protected areas in a traditional sense, those are indigenous territories. This is one of the Tembe, one of our most impactful projects, I think. This is the Tembe. And this is the area, this purple area is the part of the Tembe territory that is completely annexed and controlled by illegal loggers, drug cartels and illegal settlers. All the Tembe are kind of stuck in the north and the south, at least in 2014. And so, based on that, they realised they kind of had to mobilise and take back their land, and there is no sort of government support for that. But this is a fantastic example of what we're talking about. There's people on the ground who are motivated to protect the forest simply by being there and we can help them. In this case, you know, them just driving from one town to the next, they would run across, you know, ten logging trucks that were extracting wood from their land. Obviously, they don't want this and it's dangerous for them. So, the question is, how can we get involved? The good news is that if you look at this area, oh, this is the Tembe. Fortunately, they are well-motivated, well-equipped and ready to respond on their own. They just need a system that can make thirty rangers be responsible for what is actually about four thousand square kilometres of land here. The good news is that there's pretty, there's cellphone service out in this area. And there's no cellphone towers. I mean, we're talking about fifty, sixty kilometres, but you don't need towers because you're using what's already there. You have trees. So, the Tembe learned to climb trees and install these things high up. They were able to get cellphone service from thirty kilometres away, deep in the forest. And that leads to some pretty, you know, alerts that are able to catch logging trucks in this case, unfortunately, on their way out. But in other instances, they were able to get alerts on their way in, which leads to good instances like this, where the Tembe were able to capture and confiscate and stop illegal logging in the act. In all these cases, nobody has been hurt so far in all the interventions with the Tembe. It's a good opportunity for them to be able to catch people on the way in, which is much safer than catching them on the way out with lots of wood. And the good news potentially is that, you know, there's not just cellphone service there, the cellphone service throughout the edge of the Amazon, this is actually fairly old data, and there's lots of opportunities to make a lot of this. And that's the Amazon. So, again, people, there's people in the field who would do this. There's no local benefit to illegal logging for the most part because it's usually infrastructure, black market-driven, large-scale legal logging. There's people who would stop it if they knew they had support, if they could do it in a more safe way. That's what we found. Not always governments, usually local people. Connectivity's in the forest, and what we found is that trash can be pretty useful. These are phones that are thrown away. It's even harder to upcycle them, but we can actually put them to good use and the people on the ground can put them to good use too. Because this is actually about what's scalable. And the one thing I would add to this list here is software. The way we're able to use software in the cloud is very scalable. We don't want to build things ourselves, we want to use old hardware and new software. In this case, artificial intelligence to be able to pick things out. So, on top of just chainsaws and trucks, now we're able to use AI running in the cloud to pick out all sorts of species. Currently, just a few dozen species, but very quickly, it's getting very smart. It's able to pick out, hopefully soon, hundreds or even thousands of species in real time. And why does this matter? Well, it's not just useful for ecologists and biologists. The only way we can really save the forest, speaking to the idea of economy, like what's the economic model for, you know, how is that reconcilable with the SDGs? In our sense, I don't know if it's right or wrong, the current model, but I do know there are lessons to be learned from what's out there right now, namely that, as Silicon Valley has shown us, you can build entirely new and very expensive value in the personalisation of data, the personalisation of experiences on both a globally and a local level. So, in this case, we're basically saying through, you know, this is one example, we built an app that allows anyone from around the world to stream the live sounds of the forest. That's cool for about fifteen minutes, but now we can actually make it possible for anybody to subscribe to individual events. We can figure out what it is that you like and we can make the rainforest into a personalised experience for you, just the way Facebook finds out what news you like and you can't resist and you just have to read it, even if that is not the entire picture. So, instead of asking people to care about the rainforest, we can find what it is about the rainforest they care about and cater that to them. And that actually is a whole new value built in the forest. We're not just going to be asking for the natural resources or the social resources of the forest, we're going to be building value in attention, because as we've seen with Silicon Valley and social media, attention is value and that is something that we can use to actually increase the value of the forest on a global scale. So, yeah, use what's already there because there's so much there and you can build new value. Thanks, guys.
Brilliant, thank you very much. So, we're just seeing some fantastic examples about how science can be driving and change for the SDGs. We've got ten minutes left for some questions. Who would like to start? Some of you, I think, have come in, so missed some of the first presentations, but, so, you wanted to...
I just, I would like to ask Kabaya Shisam. The science is bridge between past, the past and future, and scientists can predict some future, but teacher who teach our young citizens to live in future condition, they maybe cannot feel so much. How to bridge, to teach teachers or how to build the bridge between past and teaching in educational process? I live for one year in Japan, so I know that Japan now in for what of the society. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your very, you know, good question. Okay, so how we can connect the past and the future and how can, how we can, you know, teach the future to the teachers? Okay, so I think the platform is very important, like this World Science Forum or maybe a much smaller one, yes, that, you know, you can connect the teachers and the scientist, you know, in person, maybe, you know, not in person, maybe, you know, just, you know, connected by the, you know, internet or something like that. So, that's kind of been a platform, yes, we can offer. Then, we can, you know, educate the teachers and they can get a past, you know, prospect from the scientist and they can understand, you know, future we're going to have, yes. So, that kind of platform is very important, to prepare that kind of platform is very important. And maybe the government can, or maybe NGOs, any, you know, organisation can provide such kind of, you know, chance for them, I think. Thank you.
Hello, it's Gordon Dalton from the International Consortium of Research Staff Associations. Two brief questions just on feasibility. One is for Jacqueline, very inspirational. I myself spent six months in Papua New Guinea doing volunteer work. And one of the big problems with introducing very complex technology was the sustainability. You're obviously a role model and very inspirational maintaining progress, but if you leave, will that very complex incinerator just, they go out of misuse once they break down, very difficult to repair? Secondly, for Tofur, fantastic, very inspirational on cellphones, is there a business model behind this? How is your Rainforest Connection? It's obviously a company, are you making money by the selling apps? Just how can this propagate and how can the rest of the world help here with your company?
Very quickly, we treated that whole incinerator, IT centre, solar, et cetera, like a Lego kit. And so, the team is now trained and we'll then be deploying it all the way up the Rift Valley and all the way around. So, we've created a business for them to go out and actually be able to then put it in other places. And we're literally got two more locations where the team of twenty, because that now, there are now twenty people hired there and working there, have actually got sufficient confidence to go out and build it in other places. And I think that's part of this bottom-up approach, seeing that it works and then going and helping others to do the same thing. So, I don't have to be there, thank goodness.
Thanks. So, in our case, we are a nonprofit tech startup. So, we are nonprofit, philanthropic money helps us to build what we're building, but no, I think it's exactly that. I don't think that saving the rainforest should be a philanthropic endeavour because there's so much value, it has to be unlocked, and it's up to us to build those solutions to get people involved. So, you know, hey, download the app, it's free, but at the same time, it'll allow you to listen to the sounds of the forest in a way. And over time, we will build economic models that help the people on the grounds, you know, have their work be supported. And so, here in this case, just search Rainforest Connection, but I'm going to play the sounds of the forest live right now, just for a second. So, I don't know if this is valuable, but I do know that it unlocks so much potential that's out there in the forest and we can pull things out and make it available to people. So, yes, we are nonprofit, but I think there is a business model there, not just for us, but for people on the ground. I could listen to the rainforest forever, actually.
Thank you. Aragno Panbaxa, the immediate past co-chair of the Global Young Academy, I'm from Thailand. My question goes to Tofur. Thanks a lot for your great presentation on the tools, which I hope that it could be applicable to Thailand, the forest in Thailand. But at a practical level, I'm just wondering if you have encountered the corrupted local politicians, because that is the case in many developing countries.
Yeah, it's definitely an issue almost everywhere. That's why we often work from the ground up, not necessarily with politicians early on. It turns out that the faster you can get the data out, the more micro the data goes out, the less chance there is of it being censored or stopped or corrupted. Indonesia, we found that as reports were being compiled and put out, those numbers would be changed and it would sort of get in the way. But when data comes out in raw form, mainly through audio and the, and then the processing happens elsewhere, you can pull new insights out of it over time and very quickly. I don't know what the impact is going to be when this actually makes an impact in places where corrupt politicians have more power. But I think that the local people, if you give them the power first, it makes it harder to walk it back, especially when you have something that adds transparency to the process. We'll see, though.
Right, I think that more or less draws it to a close. I mean, what has been so interesting for me, and I'm not a scientist at all, is just hearing some of these ideas. Tofur's, who I watched as a TED Talk, but hearing Thomas and Asamu and Jacqueline as well, it's been absolutely fascinating. And I think the one thing we didn't address, perhaps we should all think about, is where the political leadership either exists or doesn't, and just in terms of climate change and things like that, when you think about Paris. But that is a subject for another month of talks, I think. But thank you all very much indeed for this session.